Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. I would like to welcome you to this very important meeting today, Tuesday, April 4th, 2017, in the City of Portsmouth City Council Chamber. I would like to ask Commissioner Gee to please give invocation and lead us into the Pledge of Allegiance.
Would you please stand? Heavenly Father, we thank you for bringing us together today to do the work for the City of Portsmouth. We thank you for empowering us to make a difference. We ask that you aid us in making the right decisions. Pray for our mayor, our city council, and all the residents of our beloved city. In the Lord's name we pray. Amen. The Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic of America, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Gee. Madam Secretary.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, we will now have roll call. Please indicate your presence electronically. You should be hitting the green button. Williams, green button.
It is green.
Seven members of the Planning Commission are present.
Commissioners, before you are the minutes of the February 7th, 2016, public hearing, if there aren't any changes, we need a motion.
Need a motion?
We need a motion.
Gee.
Mr. Commissioner Gee.
I move to accept the minutes as presented.
Is there a second? Commissioner Thompson?
Yes, I second the motion.
Madam Secretary.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have a motion and a second. You will be voting electronically. The minutes are approved seven to zero. Please note, our next work session is Tuesday, May the 2nd, at 12:30 PM, 6th floor conference room, followed by a public hearing at 1:30 PM, City Council Chamber. Items reviewed today will be presented to City Council for action at their May the 9th, 2017, or May the 23rd, 2017, public hearing, or as otherwise noted. Planning Commission rules limit a speaker up to five minutes to speak. We also ask that everyone please silence your cellphones at this time if you have not already done so. Our first item for the day is CA-17, Uptown. The City of Portsmouth is proposing amendments to the zoning ordinance D2 Form-Based Code provisions in the Uptown area of the city that will allow deviations in permitted and non-conforming uses, site and building design standards, and other requirements of the D2 Form-Based Code through the use permit process. Our staff coordinator, John Hartley.
Mr. Chairman, members of the Planning Commission. This is a proposed amendment to the zoning ordinance and in particular, the D2 Form-Based Code provisions of the ordinance that address development in the Uptown area of the city. What is essentially proposed is to establish a use permit process within the D2 provisions that would allow for deviations in any permitted use or non-conforming use, as well as any of the provisions in the D2 section or D2 provisions that deal with the site or building design standards, as well as any other requirements of the D2 provisions of the ordinance. Essentially, we are talking about that area that it's marked D2 Form-Based Code, but it's essentially this pinkish area just to the west of downtown, running from approximately Chestnut Street on out to beyond the MLK. And this area mimics essentially a D2 district that was created a number of years ago, and then these provisions were adopted effective January 1st of 2010. The issues that we've had in the D2 district in general is that with the adoption of the D2 provisions, we've realized that over the last seven years, the net impact of that is that there were a lot of non-conforming uses, non-conforming buildings and sites that were created because of the D2 standards. The D2 standards are very prescriptive in terms of what they require to be built and where those buildings can be located, with very limited setbacks from the street that aren't always practical. And as the safety valve for some of that, the ordinance included what's called a Type 2 process, which is a process where requests for deviations could come to the Planning Commission. Unfortunately, in 2012, there was a Supreme Court case that didn't advertise this aspect, but indicated that planning commissions do not have the authority and the code to make any decisions related to zoning, final decisions. Essentially, that court decision ensured that the Planning Commission is an advisory body on zoning issues and not a deciding body. So, the safety valve that was originally built into the D2 district is no longer legal in Virginia. What is essentially proposed is allowing uses that essentially would have been allowed in the district prior to 2010, but because of the way the old ordinance was structured, we've accomplished that by referencing the uses permitted in the UR, GMU, and IL district. And that essentially prevents us from having to work with two different use classification schemes. We'll just call it the old and the new to make it easier. The proposed amendments would also allow non-conforming uses and structures to continue or to be altered or reestablished through the use permit process. And then, really, the third aspect of the use permit is there are numerous standards in the Form-Based Code. They include setbacks, site design, building design, signage, et cetera. And if there is an issue with the existing code, you can ask for a deviation again through that use permit process. I want to emphasize that we're not taking away the D2 or the ability of people to build to those standards if they so choose, but this is just an avenue, an option, that people can pursue if they want to do something that's different than what the code requires. And I apologize for the fuzziness of this map, but if you just look at the colors, this was the zoning of the D2 district prior to January 1st of 2010. And the important thing to take away from this display is the volume of purple that you see on the map. The purple is essentially the light industrial zoning that existed in this area prior to January of 2010. Virtually most of this area, under the D2 Form-Based Code, permits commercial on the ground floor and multifamily on the upper floors. So there's a fairly significant mismatch between the zoning that was there prior to 2010 and the zoning that's there today. Just to emphasize again some of the context of this amendment, I go back to the Type 2 Plan Review Process. In losing that, we lost a significant tool upon which the D2 Form-Based Code was built on, as well as other aspects of the zoning ordinance, but in particular, the Form-Based Code. In considering and recommending approval of the proposed amendments, it does now, it would create an avenue for projects to go to City Council after there has been input from all parties. And by all parties, I include the public, the staff, the development community, the developers, as well as the Planning Commission and Council. So, the Council will have the benefit of all of that information and input to consider when they consider a use permit. And finally, in the interim, we've sent a number of things to the Board of Zoning Appeals. It's not really a good fit for what the Board of Zoning Appeals should be doing in terms of variances, but once the Type 2 process collapsed or was no longer available, really, it was the only avenue until this use permit process is fully adopted. At the staff level, we've referred to this as the transition patch. We do see it as a short-term, in zoning terms, short-term solution to some problems. And the future steps are to prepare an area plan, which you heard in your work session is well underway and is to be completed by June. And then the next step would be to, based on that plan, prepare revisions to the zoning ordinance that includes a fairly, I'll call it, robust public process to ensure that the property owners, the business operators, general stakeholders, tenants, et cetera, have an opportunity to comment on whatever would be proposed as the final zoning. With that, I'll stop talking and ask if there are any questions that I can try to answer.
Commissioners, are there any questions or discussions for Mr. Hartley? Commissioner Youngblood?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Hartley, would it be fair to say that this change, this proposed change or patch, is an effort to be more business-friendly and encourage businesses to move to Portsmouth?
Very much so.
Thank you, sir.
Very much so.
Any additional questions or discussion for Mr. Hartley? Madam Secretary.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing on item CA-17-01. I do have two speakers. Our first speaker is Ms. Donna Si. You will come forward. You have up to five minutes to speak.
My name is Donna Si, and I live in the Woodbine Farms neighborhood. My concern is always about citizens being able to have influence on decisions made in this city. As you know, developers get first priority and not citizens. That was shown already in the city, the banking building, when the citizens came up and didn't want it done, but the City Council voted for it anyway. So like I said, developers overrule the citizens. And in our city, our representatives are at large, so we don't have any individual representative in the different areas of the city, so as well, we don't get represented. So I just want to make sure that the citizens are able to make decisions, to self-govern. Instead, I'm finding that's not the case here in Portsmouth. Just want to say that. Thanks. We're listening.
Thank you, Ms. Si.
Our next speaker is Mr. Mark Yodalde Yotrowski.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, Honorable Commissioners, and fellow interested parties. Before I go into my remarks, I'd just like to remind everyone, as I was reminded today, this is the anniversary of the assassination of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. And rather than focus on the tragic part of it, I have been reflecting on the immeasurable gift to this country that someone of his personal quality was, and how fortunate we were to have him for as long as we did. In regard to the agenda item, I was drawing parallels in my mind during the last City Council campaign as people flogged the Form-Based Code concept, and I was drawing parallels to the Affordable Care Act. It's one of those things that it seems everybody loves to hate. I'm not part of that everybody. I feel that the ideas, the ideals that the Form-Based Code approach embodied were worthy. As I recall, and it's been a while since I attended those presentations, but the concept was designed to reduce the amount of administrative involvement in bringing new projects to completion. It was supposed to cut down the number of hoops that applicants would jump through. Now, a very unfortunate decision by the Virginia Supreme Court, which has had quite a legacy of unfortunate decisions, undercut the ability of that approach to deliver on its promises. So, it's not the code itself, it's not the Form-Based Code itself, that is the total culprit. And I want to remind those of you who do not have institutional memory that precedes the implementation of the Form-Based Code, the idea was to try to address the issues in the former approach to zoning in the D2 district. This was a renewal, a renovation, an improvement. So time has passed, and we've seen that our best hopes have not been carried through. It does seem appropriate to me to take another look at what we're doing, but I want to admonish against throwing the baby out with the bathwater. Try to salvage the parts of it that are workable, that are flexible, and remediate those that are working against the intent of the originally implemented Form-Based Code. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Yotrowski, I want to point out that we're not throwing the bathwater, the baby out with the bathwater. If a developer wants to conform to the Form-Based Code, he still has that option. What we're trying to do is build a little bit more flexibility in here so that we're not constraining the development possibilities. At the present, it is impossible for somebody to come in and put up a restaurant with a drive-through in the D2 area. And that really limits what we can attract to that area. That's just one example. We had another case not long ago where somebody wanted to use a building that had been used for auto repair, but had been unused for two years, and by a strict interpretation of the Form-Based Code, allowing him to come into that operation and do ship repair work would have resulted in an adverse impact on a church across the street, which was something that was never foreseen in the Form-Based Code. We were able to find a solution there, but I don't want you to think that this action we're talking about today is going to be a complete flip-flop where we go from one extreme to another. We're just opening up an avenue that was somewhat closed by the Supreme Court, but I think that all of us here share your concern about doing the right thing rather than just the easy thing or the quick thing. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Chair, may I respond?
Sure, Ms. Yotrowski.
Thank you, Commissioner. I guess my point wasn't clear. I didn't want to leave the impression that the action you're taking today does in fact slam the door and does repeal and replace, as the saying goes. I do see where you are with the interim patch, attempting to try to hold things together and to be more flexible. I'm just pointing out that Form-Based Code in its intent was intended to be flexible. And I'm happy to hear of your commitment in particular, and of the Commissioners by inference, to maintaining that flexibility.
Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing on item CA-17-01. If there's anyone else here who did not get an opportunity to register and you would like to address this application, you may come forward, state your name and your address, and you will be given up to five minutes to speak.
Good afternoon, Chairman, Vice Chairman, members of the Planning Commission. For the record, my name is Lisa Murphy. I'm a local zoning attorney with an office at 999 Waterside Drive, Suite 2100, in the City of Norfolk, across the water. I'm here today to provide you with some input on behalf of my client, Wendy's Properties, Inc., or LLC, whom many of you may know, has been working with PRHA for close to two years now to try to develop a drive-through restaurant in the D2 district at 835 London Boulevard. And hopefully, you will see us before you in the next month or so with a full conditional use permit application. The process started in discussions with city staff, working through the ordinance, and 18 months ago or so, it was determined that certain deviations from the D2 district code would require variances from the BZA. There were five, six, or seven of those. Certain deviations through the Form-Based Code would require a use permit from City Council, and the use permit couldn't go forward before the BZA variance applications. It was a very difficult, cumbersome process, and all of this, to Mr. Youngblood's point, to get this particular property back onto the city's rent rolls and to have it be productive and really provide something to the city as far as a revenue base. So during the course of all of this work, we went to the BZA in December. Some of the variances were granted, some were not, and we're very happy to see these changes to the D2 district to, again, provide all of those things, all of those changes, deviations to the Form-Based Code, to put those in a use permit process so that an applicant can come before you with an application that we feel, in our case, is going to meet the spirit and the intent of the Form-Based Code and the design requirements, but yet deviate in minor instances. And, you know, there is no minor or major to the BZA. It's either a variance or it's not. So, interesting, one of the things that we took away and heard from the BZA was, if it's a problem that affects everybody generally, the solution is to change the law, not to grant a variance. So, in some case, in that sense, we were stopped from getting variances because it was a problem that was more than just a problem for our particular property. So we do very much support these changes. The one point of clarification that I had in the red line that I saw on the website, I just want to be clear that all deviations from the requirements of the Form-Based Code can be addressed in a conditional use permit application. That seemed to be the case in some of the language, and then some of the language, it appeared as though things were being excluded, and the most important thing for us, I think, is signage. So I would want that point of clarification, but we do absolutely support this, and I think it, to the one speaker's point, this actually will give Planning Commission and City Council the flexibility that they thought they were going to have under the Form-Based Code, which in reality, the flexibility hasn't been there. And again, I hope to be back before you in a month or so with a nice application for that particular property, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Commissioners, are there any questions? Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing on item CA-17-01. If there's anyone else here who would like to address this application, you may come forward at this time, state your name and your address for the record, and you will be given up to five minutes to speak. Appearing to be none, Mr. Chairman, members of the Planning Commission, this public hearing is now closed.
Commissioners, the chair is in need of a motion and a second. Commissioner Thompson?
I would like to make a motion that we accept, or that we recommend approval of CA-17-01, which will allow amendments to the zoning ordinance D2 Form-Based Code through a use permit process.
Is there a second? Commissioner Youngblood?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I second that motion.
We have a motion and a second, and you will be voting to approve CA-17-01. This item is approved seven to zero.
Madam Secretary, I believe that concludes our agenda for the day. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Commissioners, do you have any other further business that we need to discuss today? Let me just comment on one thing. I really understand that our secretary and the administrative coordinator for the Planning Department has been selected as the Employee of the Month for April. We are keenly aware of the outstanding work that she does every day, and we are just excited that other folks in the city have figured that out. For our secretary, Commissioners, please. Mr. Baldwin, any further business?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. First of all, I'd like to second your opinion there about your secretary. Quite a valuable member of the Planning Department team, and I'm certainly glad to have her with us every day, I think that. So, again, a very deserved award as Employee of the Month. I did want to mention one other thing came up. We didn't get to it in the work session, but I'll just give you a quick update. You know, we are also working on our city sign regulations. We've briefed the Planning Commission in the past about the impact of the U.S. Supreme Court case, the Reed versus Town of Gilbert, Arizona, that's pretty much requiring almost every locality, if not every locality in the country, to take a look at their sign regulations, make sure they are content neutral. If you look in our sign regulations, you will see, we have quite a number of signs that are content-specific. And we'll always point out, political signs, you can't be more specific than calling it a political sign to be content-specific. That project, you know, we have a consultant on board. We're in the initial phase of getting the outline of their work done. That's also on the same schedule, trying to get through that process by the end of June, on a very quick process with them. And to the comments that were made earlier on the use permit application from Ms. Murphy, we do recognize we have a little bit of a challenge in our D1 and D2, trying to craft some sign regulations for districts that are in the process of being revised, D2 in particular. But that is something we definitely are looking at, in particular, along the London Boulevard corridor. We know we've got some real problems there. That, in fact, was one of the first issues that came, as we mentioned before, to the staff's attention, where we started to have problems with the D2 district, was questions related to signage. So I did want to just sort of bring you up to date on that project. That's another one on a pretty rapid... That's another one on a pretty rapid process, trying to get that through so we can get ourselves back in compliance with the U.S. Supreme Court case. So, that, again, we expect to have the first draft based on the consultants in June.
Thank you, Mr. Baldwin. Any questions for Mr. Baldwin? There being none, this meeting is adjourned.